Call the City Council, a special meeting in order. Court, please call the roll.
Councilperson Hader.
Here.
Excused.
Here.
Germani.
Here.
Felder.
Here.
Mayor Clark.
Here.
Oh, it's not added to the list, yes. Yes, councilperson Stringham.
Excused.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. Because we did the swearing in, as those that may not have been here or watching, after the end of the special meeting where we made the appointment of council, recognized that there was going to be a delay for a long-term vacation that was planned from a year ago. So, Councilwoman Stringham is excused because that's where they are and look forward to her coming back to the next meeting. But this time, I'd ask we all please rise to the indication, remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Ladies and gentlemen, deliberations and discussions this evening. May our efforts promote the good of the residents of this city and all who visit.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is the approval of the regular agenda.
Manager Robinson, any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, Your Honor. At this time, being that we have two council members not present, I would like to ask council to remove item 13, which is a consideration to enter in the closed executive session for the purpose of collective bargaining item, as we will reschedule that for the next council meeting on February 3rd.
Question, that the closed executive session be removed from the agenda?
I do, yes.
Okay. Other items on the agenda for council, any adjustments or amendments? If not, motion to approve the regular agenda with the recommendation, if so?
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay. Go ahead. He's going to let you go make the motion then.
He made the motion?
Yeah, he said you can make the motion to approve it.
I made a motion to approve the regular agenda with the amendment.
Okay, thank you. So, approve the agenda with the removal of the closed executive session. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Hader.
Yeah.
Vining.
Yes.
Germani.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes. Next item, please.
The next item is the consent agenda and for approval of payments, item B, the amount should read $1,634,454.16. 1634-454.54.
Thank you. Are there any items on the consent agenda that council wishes to have pulled for further discussion? Councilman Felder?
I have a question. On an item before pulling it?
Sure.
On item 5074, I would like to disclose a conflict, a potential conflict of interest. Now, on the consent agenda, we are voting for all the items as a whole, but I am party to this agreement, or I represent the Monroe County Council CIO Social and Welfare Association in the capacity as their treasurer. I want to disclose that conflict to the council, and I would like to recuse myself if they deem it necessary.
So, at 41 West Front, you have a relationship, is a contractual relationship, or just?
No, it's volunteer board service.
Okay. So, I'm going to look at the city attorney, because I appreciate bringing that up, and you're asking me to recuse. Of course, the council can make a decision otherwise.
Your Honor, I think on that one, I would feel comfortable to say that there are conflicting interests between the two that that could be a conflict. I think then, for purposes of documenting that, rather than Councilman Felder recusing himself from all of the votes, I guess my recommendation would be that 5074 be pulled for action, so that then his recusal is applicable only to that particular item.
So, I have a follow-up comment, and I appreciate Councilman Felder bringing that up. So, this is a memorandum of understanding. Is it a majority vote, or does it require five votes?
On this one, I'm going to say it doesn't strike me as a contractual purchasing item. It's an understanding as to a previously existing item, which I can explain in a little bit more detail if desired when we get to that item for action. And I believe that in that scenario, a four vote would be sufficient to enter into that agreement.
Councilman Felder, I take your position. Would you, or I guess maybe you or somebody want to remove item 5474 and put it under council action, so we can have some further discussion, so?
I'll make the motion to pull item 5074 for council action.
Motion by Councilman Hader, supported by Councilwoman Germani, item 50... I should, sorry. First, let me stop, because we have other items on the consents. I'm getting ahead of myself with what we should do, or going to do, but we need, I guess what we're looking for is a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item 5074.
Your Honor, I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda excluding item 5074 and be pulled for council action.
Okay, so the motion is from Councilman Hader's to approve the consent agenda minus item 5074, and all remaining items be accepted, placed on file, and recommendations carried out. Let's see resolutions. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Hader.
Yes.
Still great? I'm sorry. Vining.
Yes.
Germani.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
I guess you have it on a different night, and just different stuff happens.
This is great.
My fault, I'm knowledgeable.
No, no, it's all good. It's all good. Okay.
It all works out as making sure we get things in the correct place and order for the discussion, as well as the action that we take. Perfect. Clerk, next item, please.
So, the next item is under Presentations, Communications, and Public Hearings, item 5066, the Opportunity Center at ALCC 2025 First Quarterly Report.
City Manager Robinson, I know that we received this communication, but any additional?
No, sir. That is, the items that you received in this communication is for your information of the achievements of the Opportunity Center at ALCC in the first quarter of 2025. And I think it's pretty self-explanatory, and Stephanie is not here to present or comment, but I think they are doing very well with their activities.
Thanks. And this is not an action item, doesn't require a vote, but we're just going to recognize we received a communication and what it's for. Clerk, next item, please.
Next item is 5075, consideration of extension of 2024 concrete contracts.
Yes, Your Honor and council, we are hoping that you would be willing to hear our rationale for consideration of the extension of the 2024 concrete contracts. This is not an actual action item on this, in our actual action today, but we wanted to discuss it to make sure that you're okay with it before we put it on for the February 3rd or later council meeting.
Thank you. I see Mr. Lewis is here, and he's going to present the item.
Yes.
Welcome, Mr. Lewis.
Honorable Mayor and council, Patrick Lewis, Director of Engineering and Public Services. Yes, this was intended to be a work session item at the last minute, so I appreciate you putting it on the presentations tonight, so we can sort of know where we stand here. I know we've talked about last year's contracts. We've talked about some, in the past, we've had some extensions of contractors that have offered us a similar thing to what GV Cement is offering now, and that would be more or less extension of last year's unit prices into this year, with one exception. They did have a decent enough price increase from their suppliers for concrete itself, for the materials, that they wanted to just get a little small amount on that to recover those costs that would be increased from this, from last year. Understanding, we typically, the default around here, and the default with all public agencies, is that we would advertise projects for bids as they come out, and then award to the lowest responsible bidder. And certainly, it's within your purview to tell me, no, we're going to do that again with this year's construction. But I kind of felt like it was reasonable to bring this in front of you, because this could have the impact of creating some advantages for us for this year's coming construction. And the largest one of those is certainly, when you bid a project, there's an additional three to four weeks that occur on there, where you have to have the project advertised, and then it comes to council for bid awards. Versus, if we know we have a contractor that we're extending for the next year, it's as simple as, as soon as the project is done, then I bring you the award with the unit prices we've already agreed to. So, yeah, it's a little easier for staff. That's not the reason we're doing it. We're doing it because I think we have the opportunity then to get some of these projects, as we get them designed, bring them to you in February or March, and get that spot in GV's schedule. Because we are still in a little bit of a contractors market. I think it may be cooling off a little bit. But when we can get somebody local that's passed our responsible bidder ordinance, that's performed well for us, and in GV's case, we also have the advantage where they tend to like our size work, so they come in and out, and they will, they won't leave a job sitting for months at a time. So, in other words, they'll work on half of a street over here, then while that's setting up, they'll work on half a street over there, they'll flop back. We were able to get a lot of our smaller jobs this year done because of their willingness to hop around back and forth. So, we would really like to take advantage of this if council is willing. I did an analysis on here to show what that would look like. The only unit price they were looking to not extend at exactly the same price was their eight-inch mainline concrete, which is about half of the value of the contract. They'd be looking for a 3% increase, which was $67 a square yard to $69. And I looked at the CPI increase. We don't have the December numbers available, at least we didn't a week ago when I put this together. But the CPI percentage changed from February 24 to October 24 is 3%. From October 23 to October 24 is 3.3%. When we went back and applied what that would, if, with just that one item changing pricing, it would have been about a 1.5% increase in costs on last year's contract. So, we could expect that overall, that item would extend to be about 1.5% increase. So, we think we're doing pretty well if we can beat the CPI. One thing I noted in the fact sheet, that, full transparency, I can't tell you for sure if we were to bid this year's Concrete Streets program that you couldn't do a little better. You know, you can always get bidders that are hungry, that want to come in at a lower price. But, as we pointed out, if we wait until the project is all put together, you know, I've got a series of five or six locations. If we wait till they're all designed and bid it in March or April, that spot in GV's calendar might not be there. There might be other bidders that don't bid it, and we saw that last year. There were only two bids for this project. So, it's sort of the whole bird in the hand is worth two in the bush kind of expression here, where we know what we're getting. And the other thing I kind of wanted to point out here, that we will bid separately, and it's a major project we have coming up, and that's the St. Mary's Park project, which the first phase is intended to consist of a new parking lot, everything basically east of the footbridge between there and Monroe Street. Now, we wouldn't consider extending GV's pricing, because there are too many unique items, landscaping, things that weren't in last year's contract, so we want to get a fair price. But this may be a situation where if GV already is working here, or already has some work under contract, they're going to go a little more aggressively at that St. Mary's Park project. Again, I can't tell you that for sure, but those are all potential advantages, and I kind of owe it to you to lay out what our pros and cons could be of an approach like this. Trying to think, what other, what other things might be relevant that you would want to hear from me? The, we wouldn't be looking to do any type of award tonight, because we're still under design. We do have the East Third Street Reconstruction and Water Main Project, that I know we've all been talking about. That is nearing completion. That one, we'd probably have to wait a little while on, though, because it's CDBG funded, so we have to get some clearances on. But within about a month, we should have a critical mass of this year's project ready to go. So, we would, instead of putting it out for bids, we would bring it to you in March, get that lined up, and probably start earlier, and have some certainty about when those are going to go. So, I think that's, that's about all I have. Mr. Robinson, did I miss anything?
No, I think you covered it well, Patrick, and I think we're just looking for your opinion, or any questions you may have regarding us extending this contract, so that we know how to go forward when we start awarding these bids.
Thank you, Patrick, and Mr. Robinson. So, any questions for Patrick? Any thoughts on the, Andrew?
Yeah, I would just-
Sorry, Councilman Felder?
Yeah.
We're not in a work session. Patrick's here in a work session.
It wasn't a work session item, was it?
It was a work session last week, yeah.
Oh, well.
Councilman.
Thank you, sir. Director Lewis, as you well know, I can be a stickler for our adherence to the normal bidding process. I think that your rationale in why we might want to deviate from that in this circumstance was, was very robust and informative, and I appreciated the work that you put into making the case for that. It can certainly be tempting to go back out and try and open bid the whole thing, but then, you know, it's certainly possible that the contract might come back, where GV increases their bid by well over 1.5% and still is the lowest bidder, say by even 29%, and is still the lowest bidder, given that that's what they came in under last time. So, where the pricing is beneficial, and we have a good partnership, and they've passed their prequal, and we know that they can do the work, I think in this case, it does make sense.
Yeah. I appreciate that, and that, I'm glad you mentioned that on the other bids. We did have, of the, of the two contracts for mainline paving, there were, they were one of two bidders. Fonson was the other one, and you mentioned the spread, and I did that, I did neglect to mention that as part of my presentation, but there was a significant spread last year. Same thing on the Alley project. On the Alley project, which was actually bid earlier last year in February, because that was when we were trying to spend our CDBG dollars, we only had two bidders. It was GV and Sal and Bean, who was going to use, do the dirt work themselves, and then use GM &amp; Sons, a subcontractor, to do the paving. Well, as you know, Sal and Bean's pretty busy right now with city work, so I don't know that they would be aggressively in the game for some of these projects this year either. So, that's kind of taken one of our local bidders off the table, because we've given them, you know, $7 million worth of water main work. So, that's, that's another challenge we have. And I'll probably be coming to you looking at a couple of very small water main items that we may look at Sal and Bean this year doing the same type of thing with pricing extensions. But that, that's, they're doubtful, they will bid a large street project like, like this this year. So, I'm glad you brought that up. I forgot to mention the bid spread.
Other question, Councilman Hader?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I agree with Councilman Felder, absolutely, and with all your points on how this could go in a different direction if we didn't do this is understandable, and I understand that completely, so I appreciate those and agree with you.
Certainly. Well, thank you, Councilman.
Any other questions? So, I'm in the same position. I think that, you know, we watch this carefully when we carry continuous bids, and the reasons why it's well thought out, you know, and there was, I'll say, significant difference when this was bid last year. It doesn't matter the company's name, but it was. And so, it doesn't mean that we don't, it was recognized by Mr. Lewis. There could be somebody else that we didn't, that may come in, and it could be lower, but we're taking that chance and risk for something that really we don't have knowledge even to occur. Be different if there had been a company saying, we really want to start, we want to start, and this may be the one. But I think as we move forward, that we take this type of discussion into consideration, but also, that doesn't mean the door's closed for others if they have a willingness, and they actually should call, well, had a time to have conversation with the staff that they, of what they may be able to do in the future. So, I appreciate the comments and the council's input. So, this is just a presentation for this night, for tonight. We may see this next meeting or the second meeting from now. It's for the opportunity to see what's put forward. So, thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you. I appreciate the feedback, so then we can now go ahead, knowing that we'll, as soon as we get those designs done, we'll bring the awards to you. It might be one street at a time, but as soon as we get them, we'll bring, bring them forth using this unit pricing, and I appreciate everyone's time and consideration.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is under council action, item 5069, Bond Authorizing Resolution 2025 Capital Improvement Bonds.
Manager Robinson.
Yes, Your Honor, this is the, something that has been a long time under work, a lot of work by our finance director to put this together, and dealing with our, our bond people, and I think that we are now looking for your authorization on the resolution for these capital improvement bonds.
Are comments from council on this item? The fact sheet does list the type of the capital improvements that were included in here, but also understanding there's other things to come. So, any questions or comments from council? If not, this is looking for authorization for the bond authorization resolution that was presented before us. Councilwoman Germani.
On the promotion, bond authorizing resolution 2025 capital improvement bonds. Move to approve the resolution authorizing 2025 capital improvement bonds, allowing for the issuance of up to $18.555 million in bonds.
Motion by Councilwoman Germani, supported by Councilman Felder on item 5069, Bond Authorization Resolution for the 2025 Capital Improvement Bonds. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Hader.
Yes.
Vining.
Yes.
Germani.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes. Next item, please.
The next item is 5072, Construction Inspection Assistance for 2025 Water Main Projects Professional Services Award.
Uh, Manager Robinson, anything additional on this?
I'm looking for the sheet on that one. This is where our, our water department, as part of our capital improvements program, the water department is requesting $18.6 million in funding for the significant water project covering 10 miles of the water mains. We're hoping that you will approve the professional services contract awarded to Manikin Smith Group for the base amount of $211,800, that a total of $245,000, including the 15% contingency be encumbered for that project. That the Manikin Smith was, is doing the design for that, that project.
Thank you. Questions from council on this item? I think as you look through the fact sheet, and I always say this, because sometimes people hear this amount of funds and what that really means, I always direct them back to the fact sheet, which is informational. It's on the clerk posted on the website. It talks about the 37 local, or total project locations, where they're at. Of course, our system is also extends beyond the city, and these ways in which we need to fund these projects to get them all done in a period of time. So, what it goes through, and it talks about the, the, how they're, some of them past have been awarded, and the fact that we need to also have this professional service contract to assist with the, the work that needs to be done before we expend the bonds. Councilman Hader?
Yep, Your Honor. For the Construction Inspection Assistance for the 2025 Water Main Projects Professional Service Award, I move that a professional service contract be awarded to the Manikin Smith Group for a base amount of $211,800, that a total of $245,000, including a 15% contingency be encumbered, that the Director of Engineering and Public Services be authorized to execute any necessary agreements on behalf of the city, and that the Finance Director be authorized to make any necessary transfers, including advancing funding for the water fund reserves until bond proceeds are available.
It's a motion by Councilman Hader, supported by Councilwoman Vining on item 5072, the Construction Inspection Assistance-
Your Honor.
I'm sorry, Councilman Felder, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, before we vote, I wanted to let Councilman Hader finish his motion there. I just have a brief question on the motion. It sounds like, at this point in time, we're ready to move forward, but whenever I see contract amounts supplementing our own staff in this amount, I do want to ask whether it's time to begin considering expanding our own staff to bring capacity into the city to perhaps work on those projects. I understand that because of the recent bonding, it's an exceptionally large project this year, and I anticipate that that's probably the reason why. What I would like for the, is that a, is that a sufficient, is that about all you're getting at there?
Well, I'm sure Director Lewis will always appreciate your saying that he needs more staff or to hire more people. But as we go through our budget process, and this is a uniquely large, large project, and I don't see that our current staffing isn't able to manage our normal caseload of engineering projects. It just so happens that they're, and as you know, over the past several years, we are really working hard to, to get a lot of these infrastructures done while we're dealing with the uncertainty with ETE and the other, the other manner. And I don't think that, you know, we haven't sat down with the engineer yet on his, his budget proposals for staff, but I don't foresee that need being something that, you know, with that, that's, that's usually a much larger discussion on how we're, how we operate before we start adding staff.
Yeah. And as long as the contracts are not recurring, I think we can probably continue in that manner, although we all remember the consistent GIS contracts that we had over and over and over again that were renewed, and then ended up eventually hiring on staff for that purpose. So, but in this particular case, I think it probably makes sense. I think there was a, there was a motion in a second, so.
Yeah, there is. I apologize. I didn't look that way after this, when I was reading, so thank you. But it's a good question. I think it's what the council's going to be facing as we start to have discussions with the administration on our budget, and what's the, what's the financial picture for the future, and are we taking on staff that might be temporary versus staff that we know that might be long-term. And I think that's, those are good discussions that we add to the list as we, as the administration brings back the budget, and, and from the departments and personnel. I think of the last couple budgets that we've passed, we've had some adjustments with personnel. We didn't really, we've added a couple, but it's usually based on something that's long-term, and also where they may come from one department to another. We've done some share work between departments, but it's worthy of the conversation, so I appreciate the comments. So, there is a motion in a second. Further comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Hader. Councilperson Hader.
Yes.
Vining.
Yes.
Germaine.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes. Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is Item 5067, Authorization to Submit Grant Application to MEDC and Resolution of Support.
Thank you. Manager Robinson.
Yes, Your Honor. With this grant, we're looking to, the Economic Development Office is looking to submit a grant, and we're looking for the authorization to submit the grant to the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, known as MEDC, for the Revitalization and Placemaking RAP Grant Program. This requested grant is for the revitalization of St. Mary's Park. The grant is a reimbursable grant, up to 50% of the project costs, with a maximum reimbursement of $1 million.
Any questions for administration? I'm just going to make a quick comment, see if there's a motion, but, you know, I think some of the work that's being done from our development area and various projects is showing the contributions and changes. I think that they've also been very successful in getting grant funding, so we always want to pursue these type of opportunities. This is one that's a little bit, even more so than some we've received, when you talk about the RAP grant from MEDC and the match funding that's there and available. Usually, you're, you know, the contributions may be 20% contribution, but the volume of funds in which you can receive from this type of a grant are significantly more, and I think that, I think at this point, we're looking to submit a grant application, and what do we have to lose? And we can, obviously, we know the work that needs to be done. We've talked about St. Mary's. So, just my thought as we move forward. I appreciate the work done on this. Other comments or a motion?
Your Honor.
Okay, Councilman Vining.
Your Honor, I move to grant authorization for the Economic and Community Development Department to submit the Revitalization and Placemaking Grant Program application and approve the Resolution of Support.
I'll second that motion.
Motion from Councilwoman Vining, supported by Councilman Hader.
Any further comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Hader.
Yes.
Vining.
Yes.
Germaine.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
Clerk, next item.
The next item is item, the item that was pulled from the consent agenda, 5074, Memorandum of Understanding Sidewalk Maintenance Fronting 41 West Front Street.
Thank you. We will start from the beginning again. Councilman Felder, I know you asked to have it because of, I'll say, a conflict or an item that you brought to our attention. I think we've talked with the city attorney and thinks it's appropriate to do so, to ask for that.
Sure. Well, I'm happy to explain my position in relationship to the requesting organization, to the council. I am the Financial Secretary for the Monroe County Council, CIO, Social and Welfare Association that owns the building at 41 West Front, also known as the Monroe County Labor History Museum. So, that is a potential conflict. It's not a compensated position. It's a volunteer board position, but I am affiliated with the organization that is making the request.
Other comments from council? Mr. Buds, I think, as you said, it'd be appropriate to move so. We could do so with a number of members that are here, correct?
Correct. I would say that I believe it is appropriate for Councilman Felder to accuse himself based on that information. And I would also say, under the charter provision, while it does talk about contractual, I will say that we had discussion about whether this item even needed to come before council or where it could have been handled administratively and given the somewhat public nature of the scenario, we thought it appropriate to bring it before all of you. But as a memorandum of understanding, basically acknowledging the facts that have already occurred with the sidewalk there, I feel comfortable that that memorandum could be authorized by four members.
Other questions? If not, Councilwoman Germaine, and we got to go back to the front page for Item 5074 for the motion.
Thank you. Move that the attached memorandum of understanding be approved, subject to minor changes in language and other details as recommended by the city attorney, provided that the content of the memorandum is not fundamentally altered and that the clerk treasurer or mayor be authorized to sign the final version on behalf of the city of Monro.
Motion from Councilwoman Germaine, supported by Councilman Vining, Item 5074, the Memorandum of Understanding Sidewalk Maintenance Fronting 41 West Front Street. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Hader.
Yes.
Vining.
Yes.
Germaine.
Yes.
Felder.
I'm staying.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
Okay. So, we have four votes in favor.
Thank you.
Those are all of the items I have this evening.
It's council comments. It's still January, so Councilman Hader, your comments this evening.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just to remind everybody that we're coming up on Black History Month, and the Monroe County Library System will be hosting their Blues Series. I don't have all the dates and artists, but I can tell you that I seen this one on February 4th at the Dorsh Library will be Chris Canas, and I did check him out on Facebook, and he is wonderful, or on YouTube. So, if you get a chance, take advantage of the Blues Series. And that's all I've got.
Vining.
No comment this evening.
Very good. Councilwoman Germaine.
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to congratulate, first of all, Matt Vanasacker for his little addition to his family. Congratulations, Matt. I know you're out there somewhere. And also Detective Adam Zimmerman for Officer of the Year, and David Kale, I hope I'm not mispronouncing that, for Firefighter of the Year. Congratulations.
Thank you. Councilman Felder, any comments this evening?
Not too much. I enjoyed the brief time I had at the River Raisin Legacy Master Plan project that was held at the Methodist Church the other night. There was actually a really good turnout for that event. That was impressive. And then, kind of related to that, I had a chance to meet the River Raisin Watershed Council's new executive director, and I'd like to wish Steve May, who is a longtime executive director of that organization, of which we are a member, of which the city is a member, a very happy retirement.
Thank you. I guess I'll follow up that comment because the River Raisin Watershed Council, which the city's been a member for many years, myself and Councilman Felder have attended those meetings in the past as representatives, so we're, we have, I was going to ask, actually ask the Councilwoman Stringham when she gets here about the possibility of being the alternate on that, because, for instance, this Friday is the meeting, is the presentation for retiring of Mr. May from the leadership, and I'm not able to attend on Friday, but so, that's a conversation that we'll have. Appointments will be on the next agenda for various boards and commissions. And as you all know, there's many that come in January and more in June, so just keep that in mind. I've talked to a few of you on some of the positions with the transition, so we'll see where we go when it comes up. And if you have questions or comments, I'll be able to have a conversation also. I also want to congratulate the Officer of the Year and Firefighter of the Year. I know there'll be also a, I'll say, a meeting on the Officer of the Year from out the entire county. I know that Manager Robinson's going to attend for the city on that opportunity to recognize all officers throughout the county from the Sheriff's Department of State Police, local officers for their recognition in this case as well. I don't have the date in front of me right now, but I know it's coming up soon. I think it's in the first, somewhere between the 6th and the 12th of February. I know that much.
13th.
13th. And I won't be here because I'm in Semcog on the 13th. So, also, I guess that's the less I'll have to say. Glad that we are to have business today, and I thank everybody for their accommodations, but also recognizing that we had some challenges the last meeting, and people say, "Why didn't you meet?" I said, "Well, you know, there's a lot of illness that are going around, plus conflicts, and we were able to schedule this special meeting today to take care of the business as we normally do." So, I want to thank council members that were able to attend this evening. So, with that, those are my comments. Clerk LaVoy.
I have nothing, Your Honor, this evening.
Manager Robinson.
Well, to second something that the mayor commented on, I'd like to thank all you council members, as I know that we were, last Monday, we were heavily struck with illnesses, et cetera, and were not able to have a quorum for the meeting, and I really appreciate your willingness to support having this special meeting tonight in order to get the items that we had on that agenda done tonight. My feeling is, it's always hard, is if you have to push items back to another meeting, that means you're pushing items back every meeting for the rest of the year until you find a way to catch up. And I really appreciate the efforts made by the council members to be able to be willing and available tonight in order to handle those things so we can stay on task and on schedule. So, I appreciate that. Another item, one of our usual attendees of our meetings, Mr. Elliot James. I did call him and check on him. He did have some surgery, and he was, he is on the mend, and he wanted me to tell you all he's sorry for not being here, but be sure that he'll be here soon to make sure we're doing our jobs. And I just, I appreciated the conversation with him. It was great. And also to let you know that I will be out of the office Thursday through Fri, or tomorrow through Friday at the Michigan Municipal Executives Conference in Bay City. I will have my phone available should you need anything, and I will be putting together the next week's agenda, because we'll see all of us again in the next week. So, just to let you know.
Thank you. Next, citizens' comments. So, if there's any present here this evening who wish to make comment, please come forward, state your name, jurisdiction of residence, and mindful of the three minutes. Mr. DeSlover, good to see you.
Thank you, Bob. Dale DeSlover, 211 North Macomb Street. I realize it's been a while since I've been here, since I only recognized one council person that was on the last time I was here. So, just to give you a real quick overview of who I am and why I'm here, I'm on the Monroe County ISD School Board, and I'm also on the County Trail Advisory Committee. And so, I've been part of the advocating for the loop trail for, it's been about eight to 10 years now. So, I'm going to start advocating for something else since construction started on that. I'm sure Bob fills you in on exactly why he goes to meetings at Semcog, and I, Bob and I will be at two meetings on Friday. And so, the one first meeting we have, it's the only committee at Semcog that can vote independently to spend money. And we'll, I don't know how much we'll vote on for Friday, but traditionally, in a year, we vote to spend five to eight to $10 million on projects. And the, so that, at this meeting, they'll select projects for carbon reduction program, congestion mitigation and air quality, transportation alternative programs, and also some other road safety programs. So, Bob and I will both be voting on Friday morning on that, and then we'll both be at an executive council meeting after that. So, I just wanted to tell you that my involvement in this. So, what I'm here to propose tonight is a bridge, much like the bridge over at St. Mary's Park, and it would be going from Waterloo Park on the south side of the river to the north side of the river, Rough Drive. So, when you, and what I'm asking for is your support, because in March or April, Semcog will be putting out a request for applications for assistant planning grants. And so, that's a four, little short, four-page application. We can get up to $50,000. You'd be the, we'd be required to contribute 18% of that. So, obviously, to do any project, you need to have plans, and the only way you're going to get anything voted on is if you come to those Semcog meetings with a plan, that's a concrete plan. So, I would request that you put that on your radar screen. What they like is they like to where these projects connect cities or communities. So, within about a 400-foot span, you would be connecting Monroe Township at the park. You would come across the river, and you would connect to the World, Mark World Trail, the city of Monroe. You cross the street to Rough Drive, and you're in Frenchtown. So, you know, couldn't be a better project to connect communities. So, I'm going to ask all of those agencies, plus Semcog, I'm on the Semcog involved because the ISD is a member. Also, the Community College is a member. So, I'm going to ask the Community College and the ISD to support that as well. I just wanted to put that on your radar screen, so as soon as that application comes out in April or March or April, we can jump on it. Thank you.
Thanks, Dale.
So, Dale is correct. The, with the Semcog, there's the Regional Review Committee, and I think council members here, pretty much everybody's had some opportunity to pass, I'll say, a planning grant. We had one last year with the Pleasants Planning Grant, and we submitted a TAP grant, which is a transportation alternative plan that's under consideration now that we might hear about on Friday. So, we'll wait to hear that come back. But Dale's correct. It's the multi-jurisdictional connectivity that gets the greater view of projects, and how do they improve the quality of life, not just in one community, but adjoining communities. It's a significant project, there's no question, because it is a jurisdictional items, which Dale said, but also a walking pedestrian trail bridge that goes over the River Raisin has many challenges, but that doesn't mean you don't think about it, and how do you do that, and it takes a plan before something is done. So, the Regional Review Committee takes grant applications four times a year. The calendar is out there. So, we always tell people, look beyond the current one, because it comes so quick, and it takes a lot of opportunity to get communities together, like we did on the Le Pleasance Road and the Jones Avenue Project. I know Mr. Lewis, city manager, myself, in engineering, as well as the Township Road Commission, all met in those, and we usually met for six months because it was a significant project. We're doing a phase of that project, and I hope that the remainder part of the phase into Monroe Charter Township, across down Le Pleasance Road and into Bowls Harbor comes to fruition, because it's a great opportunity to make connectivity for non-motorized. So, I'm going to stop, but I need to see that where Mr. DeSlover's sitting. He almost is sitting in Mr. James's seat, but he's not. So, if you were, you would hear about it. So, you're one row back, which is okay. Just a little bit of humor for tonight as well.
I was in high school when Mr. James led a walkout in Main Street College in high school.
Okay. We'll save that for when he comes back and see what he says about that. We do wish Mr. James well in his recovery. Thanks for that tidbit, though. So, we have no other action items, correct, clerk? So, next is adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion for Councilwoman Germaine, supported by Councilman Hader to adjourn. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Hader.
Yes.
Vining.
Yes.
Germaine.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.